Well, again, thank you for today, again, just for your many blessings to us. The opportunity to get to serve the city of Stanton. Just ask for wisdom, insight, understanding, discernment as we seek to make the best decisions. And we thank you and praise you in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome each and every one of you to our City of Stan regular meeting. We call it order at Stanton City Hall on December 11th, 2025 at six o'clock. Our first items to approve, first of all, are number 13, 2025 regular meeting minutes. Do you have a motion for that?
Make a motion.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. Next one is to approve our number 19, 2025 special meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second.
Thank you.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. This time we'll turn her to public comments. Anyone public comments?
Is it really necessary to come up here? We're such a little video room.
I'd love to see you up here.
We've got a cheap tiny room, let's face it. It only does block the view.
It's better though, with all the arrangement.
Blocks the view.
Well, we can move that out.
Okay, well.
What's on your mind, ma'am?
I just wanted to find out, do we have an award for city officials for a years and years of service to this city? Do we have any kind of an award?
KLC does, Kentucky League of Cities, yes. And that's once a year they'll ask for nominations.
Then I am going to nominate and see that we give some credit to Mr. Tommy Mays. All of the decorations, everything that goes on to make this city more beautiful, our park system, this man works his tail off all year long. And I think he needs some extra, extra, extra. He's beautiful and we have.
Now, we could give him a nice plaque.
Well, we need to. We need to because Tommy.
Or a big thank you.
You put so much.
We could name a street after you, Tom.
So much work all year long, not, not, you don't just come to the.
We agree, yeah, we agree with you.
Yeah. And, and the other thing is just I wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Everybody be safe and have a, have a wonderful time with your families.
All right. Thank you.
You too.
We could name that drive going up in the park.
Yeah.
Tommy Way.
Tommy Mae Way. Put a long top in there.
Now, I like that part. Tommy Mae Way. There you go.
That's, that's right.
That's kind of romantic.
I like it now.
He says no.
He doesn't get a vote.
Well, he gets a vote, but it'd be five to one, six to one. Mayor's report, just two or three things. Most of them updates. Our I-N-I sewer project that, you know, we've been working on. Basically, that's going to be completed in February of 2026. They are working, I'll just give you kind of a couple of progress reports. They've installed the pump bases, internal piping and valves at both Airport and Pearl Street lift stations. Have you seen that down there? And then the contractor, they tied the new four-inch force main into the manhole on North Main Street. They fill the line with water to conduct pressure testing here next week. So that's, and then the contractors worked on cleanup around Kroger and Church Street, which is a little bit difficult right now, especially with everything going on. So they do have the parts that they ordered, especially the pumps. They are in wherever they're getting them from, and so they should be sending those next week. And they'll continue to, you know, to get things done. Fire hydrants. They, they did not get all of them, but so far, I think we, did we make, we can send you, we'll send you the report. They got 81 of them that are completed. Got them here in terms of color. There's quite a few that are going to need some kind of, you know, work after we get done with all of them in the spring of 2026. I'm just wondering, as we look at the budget, Tommy and all of us here, if we might be able to put something in the budget next year to repair as well as replace some of these.
I think, I think that's the goal of doing that, so we kind of knew.
How, how many do we have?
We thought we only had 54, but we're up, we're up to 81 right now. And they are right to see, where are they, Ace Hardware? They still gotta go all the way to Brown Street and then back in that.
About 100, there's over 100.
Well, there's definitely that.
Definitely, yeah. So, yeah, this is good. Once we get this, I think we should probably look over it and identify the gaps in the most populated areas and how our cause of government score.
We need to work on the list. You see the, you can see the GPS here.
They should give us a baseline to go from.
Okay. But they will not finish until, you know, sometime next spring.
Yeah, we can budget for next fiscal year when we try to put some money aside to get them repaired.
Because it doesn't start till July 1st.
Well, we can even adjust it in the spring.
This we have left over.
We have to, okay. Marshall Street, again, they're not going to repay, they're not going to resurface. That will be, everything will be completed in April of 2026. So that's, the weather has caught almost everything that we've started here in late fall. The Pan Creek Water Project with, again, the, the new tank, water pump, and then some lines. The bids are going to be coming in on Friday, 12/19. And right now, looks like there's, there's quite a few bids coming in on the tank as well as the pump station and also the lines. So we hopefully will, will have some, you know, real competitive bids and come in so that we can get most of that time. Some future projects that they sent to me, and I'll just, you know, bring it to your attention. On Kentucky 11, which is, they're going to improve safety and traffic operations along Kentucky 11, Kentucky 15, stay it from east of Hall's Lane to west of Stone Gate Drive by widening and providing a two-way left-turn lane. And currently, the project is in the phase of right-of-way utilities they're purchasing. And then offers are being made at this particular time. And then, once they get that done, then that's when the construction or the bids will go out for construction. They're hoping to start that in June of next year, if everything goes well. And then one other that applies to the city. Their improved safety and level of service on Kentucky 213 in Powell County from Suns Road, where Jason lives in that area, to Reed Court. And again, the phase, project phase is right-of-way utilities are being purchased and offers are being made at this time. They're hoping that in the fall of 2026 to start that project if everything, you know, continues to go well. So those are a couple of future projects that are coming. Where are we on the tanks? The bond tank, right now, everything that has to be done, needs to be done, except now they're going to have an inspection of the tank. And that will determine kind of what needs to be done on that tank. And then, once we get that in, it looks like the funding is pretty well there, you know, for everything. And then they'll move ahead. That's, that's going to be the first contract that'll go out. Because that's the one, if you've ever been up there, if you haven't been up there, it, that much water comes out constantly, 24/7 out of that tank. That's a 600,000 gallon tank. And so we want to get that taken care of from the hand. The other two parts of that, again, will be the tunnel to the street tank. We have to put the plans, have to send them to the Division of Water, and then they will, you know, approve. And then we've got to get an easement there, which will involve our attorney as well as myself. And, and then they're going to tie in improvements to the Powell Valley Water District at Cow Creek Road. That's going to be part of that second contract. And so those are kind of just in their beginning phases. The next one is a discussion of 86 Maple Street rental options. We have advertised and advertised and advertised at this point. Again, we did have some interest, as I shared with you last time that we met. But since that point in time, we've had no interest. So I thought it might be good for us just to kind of have a discussion of maybe if there's other options that we can pursue. Maybe a house rental being one, maybe the sale of the property being another, maybe getting, turning it over to a Realtor, let them, you know, be the one that will market it, et cetera. So I'll open it up. Jason, we'll start with you.
I'm open to anything, you know, whatever makes sense is fine with me. You know, I did hope we would, we would get a restaurant or something in there, especially for this area. You know, a lot of folks work around this, this little area. It'd be nice for them to have too. But whatever makes most sense to me.
All right, Larry?
If we can't rent it, we're probably going to have to sell it.
That's true.
I think maybe a Realtor that would be good to, to be able to market it more out of town and stuff, maybe. And say about doing the rental or.
Kind of work out, I mean, they'll, they'll take a percentage.
Yeah, but, you know. Because if you, you know, turn it into a house and then rent it, you have a lot of more issues. I think renting a house out than you would a business. Been in the apartment renting business before, you know. You know, you have some issues sometimes.
Okay, Billy?
I agree. I'm not in the, a fan of renting it out residentially, but as a business, it's a good opportunity for economic development. Are, are the people that are, that have inquired, is it the price? Is it kind of?
Well, they always ask about the prices. That's the first question, you know, and most of them are kind of like, yeah. But we always say to them, it's negotiable, you know. And, you know, we're willing to work with them, we share that. Like I said, most of them have been restaurants, there've been a couple of non-restaurants, you know, that are looking to maybe put a business in there.
And they just, they have like the content or they just?
Well, and then we have to say, we have an application for them to complete. We've given out the applications and several of them, and they've never turned any in.
All right, I'm in the position that we, I mean, obviously I'm talking about moving on every other second, but keep continuing to try to solicit business maybe to put in there for our original plan to pay for the, pay for the building with the rental income. I don't know if we can sell it for enough to offset what we did. But obviously, you know, that's obviously a good plan, but maybe be, maybe negotiate or pull some of the lawful, legal, economic developments of operating incentives to businesses to come in there and make it worth our while and our while. And then ultimately go to get a business with a couple of jobs would be, would be a good deal.
A couple of businesses have looked at, but, you know, and then we're going to.
Of course, this is kind of a bad time of the year, too.
Yeah, it's a little tough time with Christmas and Thanksgiving and all that kind of stuff. So, so you're the one talking to the people. So as they kick back, they want to lease it or rent it, but they want us to provide the equipment that goes into it. And that's not changed? For the restaurant, yeah, anytime it's been a restaurant, they obviously got to have, you know, a, a vent, you know, everything that has to do with grill and all that stuff. Was that multiple people that said the same thing? Yeah, yeah, we've had at least three do that. Okay, so. And remember, I gave you a price last, kind of an estimate of 38,000 or so. So, so the amount that we are asking right now for lease or rent, 2,000? Nobody's asking to negotiate that down or? Yeah, they were willing, but, yeah, they were, they, almost everyone wanted to negotiate it down. But when it came to the restaurant and putting the proper equipment in there, they didn't want to touch that. They wanted the city to take care of that. Okay, the other options, I'm just trying to spitball. The other option was, obviously, we can just sell it, other than what the current zoning is.
For the, it's business, yeah.
So if we wanted to convert it to residential, just make that whole area set of business and a residence, just make it a full residence, which we'd have to contract, pay a little bit to get somebody to do that. But we'd have to get a zoning to change it to residential, correct? I'd say we could probably get that done.
Well, you probably could sell it to somebody that would convert it to sales.
You're thinking more. I'm thinking about to recoup our money that we have, and that less the maintenance and the land next door. Correct, right. Just how we can recoup. Yeah, we'd have to put a fence, you know, those kind of things. The highest way that we can.
Get the most.
Yeah, get the most from the property. Just some thoughts. Yeah, good, Tom?
I kind of agree with Billy. I think, I know it's a bad time of year. I don't think we waited out long enough for the, and if, is there a way that we can, with the, add a little bit to the monthly rate, but lease for the equipment? You know, if we put it in and they pay us back over two, three years, I mean, try stuff like that.
Okay.
But I think, if you've been in it, I think a monthly rental for that apartment could be an easy 700, 800 bucks, because there are 900 bucks in the bottoms right now for a one-bedroom.
Easy be 800, not 800, yeah.
Because it's a one-bedroom?
It's a one-bedroom, bath and everything.
Yeah.
And it's got its own entrance, so.
It's two, two baths up here, I meant, one bath and two.
One in the apartment.
And one in, oh, yeah, apartment, yeah, you're right.
I just think we could get 700, 800, not do, maybe do a six-month lease or something.
Just as it is, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, it don't need, I've seen a lot worse go for more than 700, 800. That, that could be easy income until we decide, as long as we do a month-by-month lease.
Month-by-month, okay. Well, and keep in mind, we purchased all of it because our intent was to build a maintenance building to, we had to, all the property to do that, so we can always consider letting go to. So what kind of consensus do I have here so we can proceed ahead? I mean, I hear two or three that are standing out, but do you want to try to get somebody in there for, like I said, a month-to-month rental? Or do you want to just wait it out for a bit?
I think we, we should probably wait it out through, you know, early next.
Yeah, maybe.
January, February, spring.
Yeah.
Spring, yeah.
And maybe we can get a little, try to get a little creative on maybe advertising. I don't know how we can do that, but I'm not good at that.
You're looking at a easy 700, 800 dollars for that apartment the way it is.
Okay, that's the way it is?
Well, that's why I say a Realtor probably would be more, reach more people than our city page, you know, as far as, as that goes.
Are you talking about to lease it?
To lease, yeah, Realtor to.
Yeah, if we're not, if we're waiting till spring, which is what I'm thinking here, then maybe we could get to, like I said, try to find another, you know, avenue to advertise.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I mean, there's people needing apartments you wouldn't believe. So adding one, one more home is not a good thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, you may have some people that, you know, buy redo into condo. You know, I mean, you could make a duplex out of that.
Or three, one bedrooms, I mean.
If somebody wanted, if somebody else bought it, did that, bought it from us and they turned it into, so we didn't have to be a, of the renter, you know, renting it out.
What I'm hearing, that we'll just continue until the spring, and then we maybe kind of prioritize a, a next step after that.
Or, yeah, and then I think rent the apartment right away if people, I mean, you can make, you know, 2, 3,000 dollars in a couple, three or four months.
What's the cost to the city right now monthly that we're paying for insurance? Teresa, what is our cost?
We just paid the electric bill and the gas bill right now.
We have insurance covering the building?
Yeah, but except like a little complete.
Plus, it's just a drawdown for the building, so we're not.
Yeah, the thing has been sitting there really inactive for two and a half years. And that, that's not good on the building, never.
So we could go ahead and possibly rent it.
Yeah, one bedroom and then maybe focus. All it needs is a good cleaning and, I mean, the paint didn't even look bad when I was in there. No, it didn't.
So you're just basically talking about the left-hand side and the rest of it just?
Leave it be.
Leave it as it is?
Try until somebody's interested in it.
Yeah. And we just tell whoever leases it, if it sells, you know, we'll give you a month, because it'll take a month to close it.
Okay.
Or if we let the buyer deal with the.
We can do that.
What's that?
The buyer, maybe want to leave them in there, let the buyer deal with it.
A little money until they, yeah. The shortage of apartments is unreal in this city.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, as much as we're growing, it's going to be.
And especially affordable.
Yeah, it needs to be affordable.
So you're saying 700, 800?
That's it, you pay all utilities, I mean, that's paying utilities, it's according how you do it.
So it could be 800 plus utilities?
I would suggest we pay utilities because you want to keep utilities on a lot of towns people renting.
Well, especially if it's month-to-month.
Yeah, they can't, they can't afford them.
Include the utilities.
End up losing your heat and fresh water lines.
Now, I have had a couple of, we've had a couple of folks ask about whether they could rent it for an apartment. We've had that, but I didn't think that was really an option, you know, at this point, but.
I just think it's, for one thing, people need apartments, and it's just sitting there.
Yes, it's just sitting there.
Have some money come in, it's just sitting there.
Yeah.
I think a generic lease, we don't need some type of policy. I heard, I, I, sorry to put you on the spot, just.
Yeah, I think a generic lease would be fine for that. I could, I could pull one off, off my computer.
Send it to me?
Yeah, I'll send it to you.
All right, thank you. Anything else, counsel? All right, uh, next is a first reading of the mapping ordinance. Everyone got that? It's a memor, it's a memorandum of understanding.
Instead of an ordinance?
Instead of, yeah, an ordinance.
More reading.
Right, yeah, this is the first reading, yeah.
Got you.
Uh, it's again, uh, between us and Powell County Mapping regarding street mapping, street naming, addressing NGIS maintenance. Any thoughts on that? Everyone didn't get that correct? All right.
It sounds like it's basically what they're doing for us now, right?
They, Candy and Robert King and everybody had a chance to look at it. They made a couple of recommendations. I changed it and sent that back out to you guys. Everything, they're okay with everything now and like it as it is.
We're good with, it's basically what's been happening, it's just on paper now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll sign it, Teresa will sign it, Justin Rice will sign it, Eddie Barnes will sign it.
Yeah, Mike, but he's done a really good job, he's just, well.
Yeah, him and I, we've been calling up, giving him the fire hydrant report and stuff like that, so he'll have it as well, stuff like that, we'll try to work together.
I don't think our determinies look that.
Are you gonna see this?
Let me see what we're talking about here.
Okay, it was, we had it last time, but we didn't have it as a.
They just made a few adjustments or something?
Well, it wasn't, it was, we looked at it more as an ordinance, but now we, it's a memorandum of understanding.
Oh, so this is not a first reading on an ordinance?
It is, no, it's a first reading on a, it says mapping ordinance, but it said, it should be memorandum, mapping. Do you have to, first reading on a memorandum of understanding?
No, it's just.
I'm in the position that we don't even have to approve it, other than we're just giving our blessings. I think it's between the, the executives, in my opinion, but.
I'll tell you if he's good with it or not.
Yeah, I think it, I think it, you're good with that.
I am, I mean, and, uh.
It looked pretty generic from what I saw.
And Justin's already looked at it and Eddie's looked at it, so we're all.
Keep from having duplicate names within the, you know.
Yes, especially with a new subdivision coming in or whatever.
Robert King, Robert King's got a lot of experience, so I know.
Yeah, he's, and he's all, they've all looked at it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and like I said, they just had a couple of minor changes. I fixed that and shot it back over to them and they were given everything.
Okay, all right, let's move on then to the contract, Robert contract, we'll end, uh, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Now, Teresa, you have talked to, what's her name?
I talked to Frances and she's getting stuff together. She said she'd have it by the end of the year, like renewal, so.
With some options, right, with some options.
Or you can take, cut it up a bit, but she said she'd have it by the end.
She give you an idea on anything?
Why would we not bid it?
How long has it been since we went through this process or?
Uh, three years ago.
Three years ago, yeah.
We did bid it, uh, let's, some of them are here.
We bid it twice.
We bid it twice and we didn't get but one, one since Runkin, yeah.
Yeah.
Out of it. I, I'm always in the press to bid it, but I just don't know that we'll get a.
A bid, yeah.
Second bid.
I mean, there's only.
No, I'm telling you, we do, but I think, I think that's probably. I think we have to bid it, but.
Yeah, and she's, she's just gonna give us some options, so that the end of the year for us to think about.
I would like opportunity for it to be bid, just in case somebody else applies. It's always better to have two people competing for service, pick the best one.
When we went to that one though, that was a, that was a mess.
It's gonna be.
They're not in business.
So we'll go ahead and, uh, we'll go ahead and get it out in January then, and then we'll have them respond within two weeks, three weeks.
After she comes back in a lot cheaper at the end of the year, cause I, I know the prices have gone down, the gas rates.
All right, do you think they dropped theirs though?
Well, our, theirs are based off of that.
It's all based on whatever.
Oh, yeah, it's based on what the government, yeah, you're right, yeah.
So, if it comes a lot cheaper, I'm.
Whatever's, whatever's best, so, yeah.
What do you wanna do? Just wait till we see what she presents to us?
She said she'd have us at the end of the year.
That's in a couple of weeks.
Am I understanding that? So like, we have an opportunity to renew it without bidding, and if we decline to do that, then we'll solicit bids for, for us.
Correct.
I think we should see what their offer is.
Okay.
All right, we'll wait for that then, uh.
Cause I don't know anybody other one around here anymore, is there? Does Urban have anybody?
Yeah, they got, uh, where is it over there?
Way to the high school.
Waste management, waste management, yeah, yeah.
They didn't bid last time.
No, I tried to get them, I talked to them.
Nor the.
And the one from.
Before that, they didn't bid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've had six years, we've only had one bid.
See, Runkin's got Richmond now.
Runkin just bought Urban.
Urban, oh, they did, okay, so.
Did they buy the, the landfill?
No, they go to waste management that way, get part of the. We may not, we may not have too many choices.
I'm not saying we need, I'm just saying we just need to responsibly review it and then look at it if you don't want it.
Yeah, I agree.
Especially we got some of the new council members never had a chance to review.
Right, we'll, uh, we'll wait till we get from her and then we'll.
You, you all don't have two, anybody, like local businesses, nobody? There's, like, three.
There used to be a one business that did that here, right?
It was in Harp.
Huh?
The last one down here was Lycie Brothers.
Yeah, they used to just do it on the back of the truck.
Year.
There, there's a new family just opened up in Urban and, uh.
A new what?
A, a new sanitation and all that stuff.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, we, we'll just kinda wait to see, you know, what comes back from, um, from Frances and then we'll, we'll go from there. Uh, next is the property room evidence management policy that was sent to you. Everyone got that correct? Any questions, any thoughts? We've got, uh, grants here. Do you wanna kinda summarize it, Grant, say?
Uh, I mean, it's just pretty self-explanatory. We're just, Jimmy's going over policy. A lot of our policies are, uh, are pretty generic that is just put offline, so. There's a lot of things that just don't apply to us, or like the old policy said, uh, we have a lot of, uh, different forms that we just don't have. So this here is just more, it's more directed for us. Uh, I think they will probably be bringing in more policies too, but, uh, something like, uh, evidence proofing, or if we get it done before we get.
Okay.
Some sort of solid, something like that, so there's not, there's not big major changes, it's just, uh, just making it more, it's just, yeah.
Any questions from the pretty standard, is this state?
Yeah.
Okay, have a motion to, uh, accept the property room evidence management policy?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Next one is a, I got a park and rec board appointment. Where are you, where are you gonna do that, Tommy?
Yeah, there.
Yeah, you can, did you get a chance to talk to her?
I did.
Good to go?
Yeah.
Yeah, you wanna recommend her, I think we did.
Okay, I have a park and rec, uh, board appointment, uh, from, uh, her name is Taylor Williams, and she will be on a one-year term. Do you wanna say anything about her, you?
Tommy, you.
She's, uh.
I can say the process was very thorough. We went through several candidates, lots of interest, um.
Yeah, there's quite a few complications, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good, but it's good to have that much interest, you know, before we just barely couldn't get enough to fill it.
I can, I can tell you everybody on the list was reconsidered and they talked through the whole process, so.
Was there, uh, how many's on that board, seven?
Yes.
This, this would make sense.
This will make a full board?
It's a full board.
We had to go to complete it by January.
Yeah, that's kinda was the goal we had, yeah. All right, I have a motion to.
You said one year term, but it technically expires twelve thirty-one, uh, twenty-six, right? Like you got all the terms down.
Yes, yeah, I got it.
She will start at the end, I mean.
And I told her, I, you know, she, she kinda shared with her that we were staggering, you know, and she, she was okay with that. All right, I have a motion to, um, uh, appoint, uh, Taylor Williams for a one-year term to park and rec board. All right, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
No.
All right, any opposed? The next is our review of the November year-to-date budget. We should have a copy of that. We should be at forty-one point six percent. Um, our, um, total income for, or income is forty-three point six, so we're a couple of percentages ahead of that. And then if you look over at the, how many pages here? The expense is at forty-one point three percent, so we're just a little bit under that.
Good guess.
Huh?
Good guess.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a couple of things that we need to read, but I think we do that in January.
Yes, do you mean the amendments?
I started working on it.
Okay.
The amendments?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to do that at least once, well, probably twice, the time we get to the.
Bid and then.
To the, okay. Any other comments, questions on the?
I would, I would like to see that, uh, any grants here, and you can back me up, this is the first time I've seen that the cops have been below budget. True, true, successful.
You might get a street named after you.
No, I mean, that's, that's, we, we struggle with that in fact.
Yeah, but we've hung on.
We hung on.
I think that's, that's the first, anytime I talk to them, that seems to be the first thing they look at and think of and plan for, and I think they're doing a good job of that. It's not an afterthought, it's a, should we have it and planned it, so I think they're doing good over there.
Yep.
I'm trying to get you a street. You, Tommy, I have a motion to accept the November year-to-date budget.
Make it.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carried. Uh, public comments, any more comments out there? Okay, all right.
You don't know.
Yeah, if you say your name, address, and.
Jeff Hensley, State Representative of Powell and Estrel in Eastern Madison, just going out and seeing the public. You're the, you, uh, sit in the hot seat for Stanton, so I'm over here to observe and support and listen.
Great, we appreciate you being here tonight, yeah. All right, Tommy, anything from you?
Yeah, I got a few things.
Okay.
Uh, first is the new street last. There's six already out.
Yeah, I noticed one down here.
I thought you had, did you make contact with them or?
No.
John has got emails from them. They're talking to the company.
About?
About.
Yeah, Gray, Gray Bar.
Okay.
Yeah, we are in conversation.
I noticed today that, that there's a seventh one starting.
Actually, we went one night and he videoed all of them and he sent it to the guy, just sent it to the company that we.
There's one in front of Mr. Ed's that's doing like the other one, it's demon. They'll demon for a while and then.
I think he's over there with seven.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw one when we were coming in the other night and I noticed it. They told him they think they can send parts to just go up and replace some.
But it's not under warranty?
They think it is. He's still checking with the company.
Yeah.
So it's not just the bulbs?
No, not.
It kinda scares me for future, you know, that means he's done went out.
Yeah, because going to Furnace Row, we're gonna have several there and then we're gonna have several out there by the new school.
Furnace Row will be the big ones, right?
But, do you like, well, they may be, yeah.
Yeah, they're not the big ones.
That's true. But with the ones out by the elementary school.
Yep, yeah, we may wanna look at a different.
Yeah, there's six or seven going in there.
Different type of lighting if this is continued, cause six out of the.
Is that all the new ones then? All the new ones?
They're all new ones.
They're all the new ones.
All the old ones are still.
Yeah.
Yeah, got some lemons.
Yep.
The lemons.
Yeah, it's like godel sometimes.
We, we got about a hundred, I mean, I'm starting.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, though, but sometimes you get it.
And then I've had quite a few complaints this month about water, the meter reading and people.
Yeah, let me, uh, try to bring you up. I thought that would come up tonight. We, we have had, um, personally, we've talked to, uh, the meter reader, you know, the leader. And, uh, we've shared with them the complaints, we've shared with them the concerns that, you know, po, folks has shared with us. And he's made a commitment that he's gonna do better. Now, this will be his sixth month, I believe, so he, he's made that commitment, but we are watching it closely. I'll just say that to you, okay?
Yeah, cause see, you know, a lot of times I, but some of the bills that out, they've talked to me about, looks like it kinda estimated instead of, instead of actually reading. But you know, as well as that, you, we can't estimate.
That's probably been, that's probably been the number one issue, is that there's, there's just too much estimating going on, instead of getting right down there, getting, cleaning it out and looking at.
Yeah, and the Public Service Commission requires if it's estimated, you could.
Estimate, yeah.
Estimate on that, that's a requirement we have.
Well, you know, if it's a flood, if it's a foot of snow, there's, there's circumstances, but when it's just, I just didn't get to them, this is all I got to this month.
Well, we, we've had, we've had a serious conversation with him, so he, he knows, he knows.
It did, have we heard anything on the speed signs from the state, when we can put them up?
No. Um, Corbin calls, calls aware of it, uh, the guy that kinda did the speed study, he's aware of it, and Frankford is aware of it. But you know how the wheels of all the ticks turn, turn, yeah.
Can we stick that one back up across from driving, the speed thing?
Obviously, yeah, yeah.
Oh, you mean the, uh, yeah, we've been on, uh, Blackburn, we've been on Blackburn, they, they were having some issues there. So we, we moved it around, but we can move back up there, yeah. Can you?
Uh, by the form of snow, it's below.
No doubt, okay. Anything else?
No, it's.
Okay, okay, well, it's gonna make you mad or it's gonna make you turn red, but I, I agree with what you said, and I thank you for saying that. He works his hell off, Tommy does.
All the time.
And we're sitting here laughing about it, but the work he does for this city and for that park, cause I know he loves those kids and, and I couldn't keep up with him when I tried to help with Christmas. I could only do a couple of days, I'd quit, but, uh, naming the street after him up there would probably be appropriate, but he, Tommy does, he, he has devoted his life to that park. And, and I never heard so many comments, positive comments about how nice our park is compared, and I'm not knocking surrounding county, I'm just saying. We have, we have second to none on a park, you know, the ice rink, uh, the lights, I've heard people say they go up there every night and drive around that parking lot. That's how much they love that lights, but Tommy does, he, he needs, remain giddy on it.
Yeah, the number of walkers in the suburbs is unreal out there.
I've said it.
And then, and then the last thing, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, yeah.
And I've, and I've.
Yeah.
Very well.
I think it was the pickleball court, that's what it was. Name the pickleball court after. What are you doing that?
Well, I didn't tell you, they were full the whole time, I worked it up there.
Or is this a town, is it named after anybody?
That would fit you, but it was it. I know the, the fields are, you know.
Yeah, that's true. You got Larry Hughes out there, you got different ones, yeah.
That's memorial.
You don't love that one? Okay, Billy?
Um, the only thing I have, and I think you're, you're working on them, is some of the stuff I've worried you about, uh, the water on Airwood.
Yeah, we, uh, we were out there today, we, I still gotta have, I've had a conversation with him, I'll have another one, but we wanted to, he's driving over that, um, meter. And we can't, and so we put up a big, large cone thing, and if he moves that, it's really gonna be bad. They got, actually that was, he, he's got a driveway in, but he's got four vehicles, and so he took the, uh, basically the grass, the yard on the, this side. He's made that into a driveway, but that's right where the meter is, and so he's ran over and it's way down.
But regardless of that, and this leads into the issue that's going on over there, is that's just a couple of customer service related complaints from our employees that I've seen. And I think that that's completely unacceptable and that shouldn't happen. We can't make everybody happy, and I get it, people are gonna be upset with the water, but, uh, and I didn't, I, there's probably two sides to the story. But I think we gotta provide a little bit better customer service when these people are experiencing these things, cause they're living here in our community. And I think that we just, even if, you know, their water's gotta be off, it's gotta be off, but we should provide a little bit of customer service.
Yeah, we followed up on it as much as we can at this point, but we too, this one over here has been going on forever, but.
But I kinda, I kinda expect that from, you know, from the water employees all the way to the police or whoever, I think the easiest thing to do is the customer service and to be as helpful as we can to people. But that's just two, the guy on Airwood had a little bit of a customer service complaint with the water department. As far as getting back to him and how they kinda went about it, I think he's good with how you're, you're handling it. But those customer service complaints, we kinda got, our employees have kinda got to.
That was out of town, when he first?
I, I understand, but that's just some things we gotta improve on. That's two that I've had lately on customer service. People not necessarily upset with the city's decisions or what's going on, but I guess maybe the way that it was handled.
Yeah, got it, okay.
So.
On the corner of Airport and Railroad, West Railroad?
It's east.
East Railroad.
East Railroad, where that water stands, you know where I'm talking about when you first.
Airport Road.
Here, here's Airport.
And, yeah, and East Railroad is.
And.
We got a pump, so.
Yeah, well, the pump's on this side, but I just don't know why, there's gotta be something to do to get that water out of that ditch. Even if, I don't know if it's the landowners, but it floods, but it's just stands and water. And I know a lot of it is, is, it's lower than the culvert, you know, but I don't know if there's what we can do to try to help that. Because it just, at least a little rain and it's, water's all over it, and I've had people from up there calling, you know, over and over again, I don't know.
Two inches of rain at Airport is a problem.
Yeah.
Don't matter where it is, actually. But I know where you're talking about.
Yeah.
It seems like it's, it's always been a problem, but it seems like it's gotten worse, even up behind Baker's in that area. It's just, I think even, we'll see it even worse this spring if we don't try to mitigate it at all. I don't think we can fix it, but if we completely, if we can mitigate it.
I'm trying to, I'm trying, I'm working on a plan for getting all the culverts cleaned out and the, um, ditches cleaned out. Hopefully by spring or in that area.
I don't think, I don't think it'll be an issue until maybe spring.
Right, and I'm, I'm working on it right now, actually. And if I can get some of those done, I think that'll help. And, and when they close off, lease the lane and open that up, that may help going that way drainage.
I think ever since they filled in Baker, Baker's Lake and put that culvert under the parkway, it's made everything worse.
Now, somebody told me that they just cleaned that out. Um, they reported to me that the state was up there, they came to their house.
They done a very good job.
Did the state do it?
What did they?
They did it, they, that ditch-
Oh, the, the cul, the ditch?
They cleaned it out, silted it, put the big rocks in it, it looks-
Yeah.
The one coming by these?
It's, it's in between the fallins and-
Yes, you're talking about the Catholic, the Catholic church? Yeah, I saw that.
That culvert had some issues in the state.
They took all the trees up, I mean, they done, the state done a really good job of that.
If you get the state to do that, that's great, that's awesome. Larry?
I agree with everybody else.
Jason?
Just thinking about a plan for, you know, impending weather coming towards us, you know. Uh, we've got, you know, try to do our best to, to salt, uh, scatter salt or, or scrape roads, whatever we can do to help folks out. But that's, that's about it all, I can think of.
Second point, is our dump truck ready to go? Are they gonna use it?
Yeah, they'll use it, yeah.
Get the blade and everything.
It's all ready.
Ready to go.
I don't know if it's ready to go, but it will be. It don't take them long to put it on there.
Right, I got you.
And, you know, they'll, that, that was a blessing last year.
Yeah.
We got a lot of compliments because our streets were clean, you know.
We'll have that come out with it too, if you do some of the stuff.
Yeah, where, where are we at on that?
Did he got with you? Did he get that with every day?
He did, and he called and got a P.O. and I had to email it to him.
That'd be a fun deal, a lot, but we want the blade on it.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, is it on, on its way?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, the machinery's there, he's waiting for the broom and the-
Oh, yeah.
The blade.
To clean the streets?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Mr. Dodd?
Two matters for open session, runs are low. Uh, the first, I enjoyed that article, I don't know what newspaper, is it either the Patriot or maybe the Estill County Newspaper about the golf course and, um, the history of it. I thought that was interesting.
The beach court?
Uh, I give, I don't know.
Is that, is that the golf? Yeah.
Yeah.
Were they dedicated to-
Yeah, where you gave a speech at it, yeah, it was in the newspaper. It was interesting.
So you didn't tell somebody?
I guess I'm one of the few surviving ones.
You made it through?
No, it was, it was just, it was just confirming that, you know, the fact that there's a lot of people in this county that had the same vision. We got to that point, uh, and it was very nice from, I think it was Hearns Funeral Home and the Ladies Auxiliary that actually put up the money to put a bench to recognize the people who were original sponsors, uh, to get the golf course going. And it's, uh-
Yeah, the beach court you're talking about?
It's, yes, the beach court.
Yeah, it's nice.
Well, thank you for saying that, and it's turned out to be a really nice place for beauty to get together and, you know, I've met a lot of people that I didn't know in this county from just going over there. But, uh, there's a lot of folks that had their hand in that and got recognized.
They get a lot of guests, you know, to go there, play the golf or something. That's great, awesome.
The, the second matter is I was late because, uh, the traffic going up this main drag here was going about five miles an hour because of the Christmas decorations. They're literally beautiful. And I was behind this big truck and I was, you know, trying to figure out a way to legally zoop around it. And I couldn't, and so finally I just went with the flow and went about five miles an hour and enjoyed all the decorations. And it is beautiful, I mean, y'all have done a good job. I mean, thirty years ago, twenty years ago, it didn't look like this, and it, it, it's real beautiful.
We don't want you to break the law now, don't we?
It was packed when I was coming in.
It was Tommy, it was Tommy.
No, I had loved it.
Tommy and his group do that every single holiday, everything we have, Tommy.
I don't know who did it, but it's beautiful, yeah.
You need to swing by the park.
Yes, really.
Isn't it looking nice?
That's where we got-
Just trip down around the park a lot, man.
I might have to bring my grandbaby down. So many, that's a horse park.
Too bad we don't have just a drive-through, you know, if we could do it that way, that'd be great.
That's the goal.
Anything else?
That's all for open and tough week matter.
That would be great, wouldn't it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments for anyone? Okay, we need to have, uh, we're gonna have closed session, KRS six one dot eight one five, have a motion for that?
Make the motion.
Second?
Oh, they leave?
Yeah, they did.
All in favor?
I used to.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we did, we have.
All in favor?
Yeah.